God will come, Father, today, Lord, Father, and come as we know how, Lord God. While you say in your word, Lord Father, if any lack wisdom to ask you, Lord Father, and you give all good things from the book, Father, we just ask you, Father, today for wisdom, Lord God, Father, for each and every one of us, Lord, that we sit here and do the county's business, Father, and Father, give us the wisdom, Lord, Father, we need, Father, to get the job done, Lord, give us the wisdom, Father, and the conviction we need, Lord, to get it done in the proper way. Father, we pray, Lord Father, for our troops, God is in harm's way today. Father, we pray, God, that you would just touch them, Lord God, and feed with them, Lord. God, we pray for our president, Lord God, has so much on his shoulders, Lord God, that all these lives, Father, are depending upon him. Lord, does he send them in harm's way? Father, touch them, God, give them a peace and comfort that only you can give. Father, we pray for this county, God, we pray for its leaders. Father, we pray, God, Father, that you would just help us, Lord Father, just to show them, Father, the love toward one another, God, that you show toward us. Lord Jesus guides and directs us, Lord, and we forevermore give you praise, honor, and glory, and it's in the name of Jesus we ask you prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Call, brother please.
Today, Lloyd Russell Ray.
Here.
Cory Devonport.
Here.
Karen Ashford.
Here.
Jim Bush.
Here.
Greg Mitchell.
Here.
Brent Brandon.
Here.
Randy Gannon.
Here.
Kim Devonport. Ronnie Mahappy.
Here.
Next, I'm going to get into number five, is to approve the...
Do I motion to approve the motion? No, I have it written down there.
I do, so, I know the Daniel chose the email about the school, um, resolution that the state needed something. So, I think we've got to approve that again because... Brent, do you know anything about that?
No, I do not.
It's the one where the wording... The wording that the state wanted changed, she says, in the email. I'd like to add that, I mean, that's not even different from what we did last time. We've already approved it, we said, they had to put the wording differently in the resolution, but make a motion that we have to add to it.
It's the wording.
It was something about the state that they needed for the law. The rate or something, it wasn't nothing that we had to really approve, it was more of what they needed in the resolution, the way I understood it, unless y'all understand it something different.
Is there any paperwork that affects on the table?
Well, she said everybody saw.
But they, they send the package at the same...
Right here. This is what, this is what I got in my package. I mean, we're not changing anything on power at all, to my knowledge, this was what the state needed, it was something about, I think, here, you're about to think about the interest rate or something on...
This, the email said, the only change to the resolution is the new subsection C in section one.
Subsection C.
Is the bold language, which is a requirement of the state that be enforced.
Okay, on the back page. It just has to be in bold. So, I make a motion to put that on the agenda, because it didn't make the time, I mean, that was state leading, not a county thing, than what I bring up.
And what I bring is email that's been changed.
Right there. Second, we've got a second, their motion, put it on, again, and a second, now the debate.
Just a question. Leonard, oh, from the minutes from the last meeting, was a resolution number assigned to this?
It's fourteen, on my paper at home.
Because that would be important, which should add to the, to the design of the resolution.
Twenty nineteen dash fourteen.
Including all the, the motion.
Okay, so, you're right. I'll make the motion that we review twenty nineteen dash fourteen resolution, or resolution twenty nineteen dash fourteen.
Just one point.
That is right.
Twenty nineteen dash fifteen.
Fifteen, sorry.
Got a motion to add resolution number twenty nineteen dash fifteen with changes that's been asked for most by the state, on the agenda, now, and we've got a second, by rank in, right? Any more debate, any more comments?
Russell Ray.
Yes.
Cory Devonport.
Yes.
Karen Ashford.
Yes.
Jim Bush.
Do we borrow too much money?
No.
Greg Mitchell.
Yes.
Brent Brandon.
Yes.
Randy Gannon.
Yes.
Ronnie Mahappy.
Yes.
So, would we...
Seven to one.
Do we vote on this now?
Yes.
We're going to vote on it.
Okay. Always remember, listen to motion.
Specify, I'll have to get a vote.
All right. Next, on the agenda to approve, consent agenda, consent agenda, approve, uh, consent of reading approval of prior meeting minutes, be approved notice, I think it's gave out a list of notice, Christine Devlin and Larry from the Rock, I entertain motion.
I have a motion to approve, no one, we have no objection.
I say, I've got a second, I've got a motion to approve, uh, consent agenda, second,
there's a second, any better? Call it on.
Actually, now, we're supposed to vote on that.
I'm playing right?
Uh...
We're getting through it now. Now, number seven, on the agenda is plugged, the comment period, will be fifteen minutes. So, we will start real here.
I don't know how this works.
See, they take somebody.
Um, for, for quite a few years now, there, the state has required what's called an annual report. It, uh, it requires that if you have any intention as a county of making changes on solid waste, whether it's equipment, or locations, or whatever, it has to be included in this annual report, otherwise it won't be considered by the state, wherever they're at all involved. Uh, one of the important things that I'm, and why I'm, why I'm letting you know is that you are always welcome to let, uh, let us know anything that goes to the four county regional board, because, uh, that, that's where I get, we get the help to put everything together and to put it out electronically, send it to the state by the end of March. One other thing that's always required is that every business, commercial, industrial, whatever, is invited to fill out a survey stating what they, what they have done to reduce, uh, the landfill percentage, and that would be, uh, when they recycle metal, it's like clean material, because lots of metal things that they do that appear on this recycling report each year, and they're doing, and the more, the more reports that are filled out, and the more tonnage that we could say we have, you know, burned and recycled, uh, the better it is for us with things like grants, or, uh, any other relationship we could state. So, just so you all know that whatever you have thought of, that if you think would be a good thing, should run by, uh, this county executive, or, or either one of us, and we'll make sure it gets into the annual report. Thank goodness we get help from Lisa Locke, because, uh, she, she is, been doing the majority of this work, I do some of the collection of the, of the surveys, which she's been doing the mortgage, and with, with Brent and myself for quite several years, and, uh, I think it makes a difference. But, I want you to know, if someone in your district says something, I got this thing in the mail, isn't it any good, and you just tell them, if you can, kind of fill it out, it makes a difference, okay?
If you, thank you, Dave.
All right. Anyone ask you? What about here? All right. First, the comment period's closed, uh, number eight, our business title, Adam, uh, I haven't got my yet, it was done. And, number nine, Matthew Cooper, James, as he had a comment about the added hospital update and discussion, uh, I would turn the floor over to you, Mr. Cooper.
All right, so, I think we've got enough for everybody. I'll take my own page now. This is, got a lot in it, so the front cover is just showing it's a proposed contract that we'll talk about later, so, to give y'all just a, I don't know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna insult anybody themselves, so I'm just gonna give you a general overview, and you already know what I'm telling you, and there's something different we gotta finish it. So, uh, Mr. Bush called me back before Christmas, and asked me to come down and talk with you. Y'all have received an order from the Fire Marshal's Office. Um, there has been, over the past eight, seven, eight years we're going on now, a lot of things back and forth with the Fire Marshal's Office, uh, many, back in twelve, there were quite a few more items, some of those items have been addressed over time, exit signs, made up some stuff inside, um, but for the past probably three to four years, there's not really been any action taken. Um, this supersedes me, I had a predecessor with my company that actually worked with the former county mayor on part of this, I had another predecessor at my company that had worked on this, and then I came in about two years ago, and wrote some layers and got some correspondence back and forth. Um, basically, the nuts and bolts of it is, the county has been issued a document that says you have three items that must be addressed at this building, or the state Fire Marshal's Office is going to take legal action against it. Um, it is, for our conversation I had yesterday, it has escalated to the point that the state is basically saying, fix it, or we're gonna, we're gonna send it to the DA, and they're gonna push legal action against the county. I don't know what that is, I haven't talked to, uh, there's a gentleman with the Fire Marshal, with the state, that, that I reached out to, Mr. Jimmy Taylor is your local gentleman, I've, I've talked with him, I have not talked to the, the folks, the league, from the league at the same time. But, bottom line is, there are the three items that need to be addressed, or there is a sprinkler system in that building that is not operational currently. Uh, we did write some correspondence, and we got some occupants and classifications changed with the state, so that building technically does not require a sprinkler system today, that is, that is what the state has agreed to, but because you have sprinkler heads, and you have some other apparatus inside the building, there is an appearance in the sprinkler system. So, in that regard, the county has two options, you can either have somebody come in, go through the sprinkler system and make it fully operational, which obviously is probably your best option, but it is gonna be a very expensive option. From a classification standpoint, you do not require a sprinkler system, so your second option in that regard is to have them come in and basically decommission your sprinkler, the sprinkler system in the building. What that would involve would be to go through and take out all of the existing sprinkler heads, cap them all off, replace any ceiling tiles that have a hole in them, you know, implying, and basically make it look like there was never one there. The state has said that would be an option for you all to do that. The second major item that's gonna have to be addressed is the fire alarm system. There is a fire alarm system in the building now, I think there have been some minor things done to it, but it is, it needs to be fully tested, and it needs to be fully made sure that it is fully operational, up to standard, up to the A's codes. Um, the, not knowing what the operational status is, I can't tell you for sure what that building will take, because there are, you probably have an augmented existing system if you're gonna try and redo that system. The third and final item that is being expressed is there are, throughout a portion of the building, not all, there are what they call cane fiber ceiling tiles, basically, they are a flammable ceiling tile. Uh, IBC code says that is not allowed, fire code says that is not allowed, those tiles have to be removed from the building, and either painted black, or put in a new drop ceiling in those areas. So, those are the three items that are specifically documented in the order, which this is what you all have received. Inside that order, it says that you have six months from the date of receipt to either get those things addressed, or have a plan and place that's submitted and approved to the Fire Marshal's Office, otherwise, they, that's, that's your deadline, that's May the ninth, in case anybody that's, you received this letter, remember the twenty first, so May the nineteenth is your date, that you have to have something, either fully in compliance, and a report submitted and approved to the state, or you have partial compliance, and you have a plan that has been approved by the state for you to finish it. Uh, my conversation with Mr. Taylor, I'm not sure at this point how much grace would be extended on that time, because this goes back so far, his indication was that it would be better, probably, to just go ahead and take care of the item, to get them addressed, because the state may not have a lot of leniency when it comes to dealing with a time extension. So, so, I've been talking to Mr. Taylor, and I said, talk to Brent, I got a copy of the order, so, the last page of the document I gave y'all is probably what y'all are gonna be the most interested in, and that is an estimated budget, but, um, so you can see I have, the way it's working down, I have the three items outlined at the top, and then I've got some, some other fees and things associated with it at the bottom. You wanna copy that, or they're typed, and probably what you have there. Um, so you can see, the first item on there is the sprinkler system decommission, that's, that's what I had priced now, the moving of the pair, obviously, that's something to look at, and we have to have a sprinkler company come in and do that. But from the standpoint of the system itself, the way I arrived at them, I'm gonna break down, so y'all know I'm not just pulling stuff out of my hand. Uh, roughly, I, I've not counted them, but I have heard there's a roughly three hundred heads in that building, plus or minus. So, I estimated a hundred dollars a head to take them out and fix the ceiling tiles that we've got there, and then an extra somewhere between eight and ten thousand dollars for full, full decommission. Full decommission, it means that it has to be completely disconnected from the public water system. So, if you go to the south end of that building, there's a FDC fire department connection, there's some valves and a couple of things, that would be, if the fire department were to come in, they hooked to that, they pressurized that system, and it does its thing. So, that all has been completely decommissioned, you have to be, it has been fully de, 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 disconnected from the public water supply to be fully decommissioned. So, I figured an additional eight, ten thousand dollars took, you know, pretty miscellaneous things, so that's the forty thousand dollars to decommission your sprinkler system. Um, fire alarm is the big, that's actually a big one, and, uh, what I have estimated here is basically a four, four plus, because I don't know the condition of what you got, it's hard, gonna be hard for me to put a number on what's gonna cost to do that. We just recently re-get an old high school building in Randy County, and we've put a new, it's got a new fire alarm system in it, so I went to that contractor, spoke with him directly, and he got me getting prices for what he spent. That was a roughly seventeen thousand square foot building. This building is just a little over thirty thousand total, if you take the three stories on the south end, and you got two, two-story se, or you got the two-story section from there, roughly thirty thousand square feet, so roughly double the square foot. Total cost for the electrical conduit and the actual fire equipment for the seventeen thousand square foot building was roughly twenty-two, twenty-two and twenty-five thousand, depending on how the electrician will get it. So, I effectively doubled that, that's where I got the fifty thousand dollars. Now, it could be less, and it could be more, I don't know, because I'm using things that I can equate to give you a ballpark. Now, the, the last item, the ceiling tiles, um, basically what I did there, it's not in a whole building, so I estimated about a third of it, ten thousand square foot, and roughly four dollars a square foot, to, to, that would be to take them down and to put something down, and whether you're redoing the room with a full drop ceiling, or whether you're just painting from eight foot up, black, and leaving a, you know, leaving a grid and a, and a light hanging there, and that's, that's actually becoming a more common way to do ceilings in some places, is to just black them out. So, those are your main three items, now, the, the rest of it is obviously just estimated fees, so, the way I told Brent, if, if y'all were to want us to help you with this, uh, we would just bill it on an hourly basis, so whatever time I spend, I would bill you directly on an hourly basis. Um, so, the estimated engineering and design services are fifteen thousand is approximately a hundred to a hundred and twenty hours, that's, that's the ballpark estimate I have on, could be less, could, I don't expect to be a lot more, but that's the second one there, the plan preparation, so for us to build a full fire alarm on this building, we're gonna have to have a floor. Electrician has got to have a, or the electrical engineer and the fire designer is gonna have to have a floor plan to develop where the sirens have to go, where the smoke detectors have to go, where the poles need to go, and so, to my knowledge, because we've looked at this, and we looked at this several years ago, there are no floor plans existing for that building. Now, if there are, somebody has the old one for that stuck somewhere, it'd be great, but otherwise, we're gonna have to develop a floor plan for that building to use to do the other, the, the fire alarm system. So, that's what that fifteen, fifteen thousand area is just the estimate of what it would take to, to develop a basic floor plan for the building. Um, inspection, other professional consulting services, so that's an estimate of other services, so we're gonna have to have an electrician, a fire alarm designer, um, we'll probably have an architect review, so any other professional services that are involved in doing this would just be a pass route for the basic walk-up. Legal services, I threw that in there, because this is, I think, y'all, those county attorney may already be involved in this, but it is being elevated to a point where it is in legal status at the state, so you're probably gonna have some legal fees associated with whatever we're doing, whether that's just, uh, write letters and give correspondence back and forth, you're gonna have some, just so I plug legal, and then I just got a contingency line on there, ten thousand. So, so you all can see, you're roughly looking at approximately two hundred thousand dollars for, for, to get this order addressed. Um, the other stuff in there, again, I didn't know, y'all are kinda, look like you're all getting this information right now, so, I put together a little contract, and wanted us to move on this, that's what the rest, both the rest of that document is, it has our current hourly rates, terms and conditions, it's got a scope of workout by me, if the commission wanted us to go ahead and, and now, and like I told Brent, to this point, we've not built it all out, we've been, and we have been in and out of this, we know, and that's part of the reason why I think, Mr. Dianne, I actually recommend Brent give us a call, because we do have a little bit of history, and I think there was some thought that perhaps we could help move this thing along a little quicker, because we did have a little bit of background with it. Um, so, not knowing what y'all, what the commission will be, I did put together just a basic hourly contract, if y'all wanted to take action on it, maybe, that's fine, if not, if you want us to review it, I understand that completely, but, but I did wanna go ahead and have that available for the commission, if, if y'all wanted us to, to go ahead and, and, and move forward, um, in an official capacity, we're gonna do that, so, um, and I guess, more or less at that, I'll kinda entertain any questions y'all might have, I'll try to answer them, I'm, I'm not, I don't know that I'd say I fully inspected the building, I have crawled through the building a few times with the state, fire, electric inspector, and Mr. Taylor would have walked through down, but I don't know, I, I haven't been through it in the last few months, so, I guess...
What was that, to be done, day to day?
So, the, the, the way the order reads, it says six months from date of receipt. The order is stamped receipt November twenty-first, I did a hundred and eighty days from that, which put it at, at May the nineteenth.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
It is an old building. Is it gonna be tested for asbestos?
Well, and I do, we, the only thing in regard of what we're talking about here is the ceiling tiles, would be the only thing that if they start taking the ceiling tiles down, and there's any question that they may be asbestos tiles, that would be obviously considered hazardous, hazardous material, and would have to be addressed independent of what we're talking about here, that would be a separate mitigation, remediation that would have to be done. I have not had any testing done on that building, um, and from a, the sprinkler system and the fire alarm system, you shouldn't be disturbing anything, I mean, other than maybe if they take a tile down, and do the ceiling, to redo the ceiling, but you gotta take any of the old cane fiber tiles down anyway, so that would kinda fall in line with getting rid of the ceiling of the, of the old tiles. So, specifically, I don't, I, only thing I could say is in regard to any ceiling tiles that would have to be removed, that would be if, if we, you might wanna have that tested just to make sure they're not asbestos tiles, and then have that addressed, you know, that has a time.
Well, you know, as far as the ceiling tile, but there's an awful lot of old plumbing in there that's wrapped in asbestos in that whole building.
Right.
That's what I'm getting at.
So, if...
If it has the positive, you've got people working in there, they're breathing it, now, wouldn't it be a lot of devil's advocate, go ahead and test it, and make sure that there's no harm that can be to the people before this is even...
It wouldn't hurt anything, no, I would agree with you, it would not hurt to have a company come in and do, uh, if you're gonna do asbestos, I would do lead and mold and asbestos, those are the big three, have it all tested, and have somebody come in and paint hyping insulation, um, that is, if, if you're talking about full safety, yes, that would be, it would be the, the good steward thing, to, to so to speak, specifically with what I've ta, what I've been tasked with, I... I understand that. You know, but, but to your question, yes, and, and at the time, you're right, it would be, and coming upon you whatever was found to be addressed at that, at, at the time, you know, I don't know that you had to do it at that time, but I would probably recommend that y'all work in your next budget or something to go ahead and do the bite and remediation if, if something was...
Well, the way I would look at it, if that be a problem, then that just puts more on what we're looking at here.
Yes, sir, that would be correct.
Anything, and with, with people, with people working in there, every day, breathing air, you don't know what you're breathing.
So, asbestos, the, not, fortune's not the right word, asbestos is one of those things that as long as it's not disturbed, it typically is not gonna present an issue. If you go in and, to, to your point, if you go in and start monkeying with stuff, and you potentially stir it up, then you could end up with an issue. Um, from a day-to-day standpoint, mold is...